My pleasure to be here in the United States of America and to be here on behalf of the United States. My nation, my God, and the people of the United States of America.
I will call Lana.
Here.
Dan.
Yep.
Rob.
Here.
Al.
Here.
Uh, Tommy has resigned as everybody knows. That is Andy, utilities guys here.
I don't see them.
Tony, here. Here, pigs. Angie.
Yes.
And Dee.
Here.
We're all here. Okay, consent agenda. Approval of the agenda, approval of the minutes, approval of the bills. You don't have any building permits right now. There are no building permits, so I have a motion to accept the consent agenda.
To approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Yep.
Okay, a second. Is there any discussion? No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Treasury report, Dee.
Like I said, with the bank reconciliation from May and everything appeared to be correct. See, you report there are five funds listed there that earned the interest. Reviewed the daily transactions and the accounts payable on the dates listed. And reviewed the fine sheets and the three in the month. Everything appeared to be correct. And then reviewed the general ledger entries for the money.
Are there any questions for Dee regarding the Treasury report? No questions. I have a motion to accept the Treasury report.
I'm going to accept the Treasury report.
Do I have a second?
The second.
No discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
The Treasury report is approved. Council's comments. Anything, Lana?
No.
Al, anything?
Uh-uh.
Rob?
No sir.
Dan?
Yep. Notice I passed this out. It's code. And, uh, the reason I passed it out was, uh, you're on the city council, right, Al?
Yes.
Well, that's, you're not supposed to park on that outside, which you do all the time. Last year we talked to you about it. We said we didn't do it anymore.
Nobody talked to me last year.
Yes, I did.
Yes.
So you don't want me to park on that side? Are you going to park along the way or what?
Oh, read it.
I read it. I think it was.
Did you tell me?
I'm just curious who's going to measure the eighteen inches and turn, check to make sure the tires are turned right away.
Which side of the vehicle goes to that curb? It says right in there.
Why not?
Nope, you tell me then.
I'm just asking. Are you going to measure that and make sure the tires are turned right away?
It's not so much that. It's pulling up into the line of traffic. When you got your trailer on there, you're parked on this side, you pull out this way, there's people coming down this street. You know, you're supposed to be on there to set an example. So just, that's the reason I got this.
Typically, parking is with the traffic and the red man. Tires, passenger side tires are with, next to the curb. It does say in here that local authorities may, by ordinance, prevent parking the other direction. We don't have that ordinance, so... Basically, it's just asking people to follow common sense.
I see a few others, you know, like, I won't just say all down. You know, there are some of the apartments that were parked on that side and a few others too, so, yeah.
There's other people.
It's something we need to be aware of.
Hey, I just handed that out so people could see it. Matt, you don't make good to laugh because you do it too. Hi, Jacob.
Okay, anything else? Dan?
No.
All right, City Clerk's comments.
Um, if y'all don't know, we have an employee that had a baby, so I'll be giving, taking the flower fund and sending something, giving him, I just giving him the money. I don't want babies to eat, so I usually just give him a lot of money that they set aside. So if y'all want to throw that in, throw some money back into the, um, flower fund. Uh, and then, I would go to Academy June nineteenth through the twenty-first. Dee will be here, so...
Nineteenth through the twenty-first.
This month. No, this is the one that's usually in July. It's always been in July, but they changed it to June this year for some reason.
Nineteenth through the twenty-first.
Hopefully I have my car back. Otherwise, that's everything I've got.
All right, Mayor's comments. Couple of things. We were informed by Iowa DOT that on the eighteenth, they will be letting the contracts for resurfacing of the highway all the way down to the highway. Three, so that's roughly about six and a half miles. Um, at the same time, it's my understanding they will let the contracts for the, uh, replacement of the sidewalks that go from basically Pine Street down here at this corner, down to Second Street, and then, uh, why, uh, that will be taken care of by a separate funding issue. They will also be removing most of the trees along Garfield. A lot of them are either damaged or dead or, uh, so they need to come out. I do want to look at amending our ordinance to, uh, call for, uh, uh, no replanting in those, in the area between the curb and the sidewalk. All of our drain, our stormwater drainage is in that area. Some of our utilities, it just makes for a mess, so... If people want to plant a tree on their yard, that's fine, um, but as far as planting in those areas, I think we have to look hard at that, whether we want to, um, have that problem come, uh, continue. But down in the, the, uh, tree pile today, and, uh, we've got some people that don't understand that it's not a dump. So there's a, um, couple of pallets and some junk plywood that somebody dropped off down there. So if it continues, I guess we'll have to bring it up to the council to look at the possibility of closing it to the public. Because if people are going to abuse it, you know, what's the sense of having open if we've got to spend time cleaning it up? I think that was it for right now. So, nobody here for utilities to report. Citizens' comments.
There was not anyone who was.
Okay. Compliment forms. None? Unfinished business, City Facebook account. I have done some research on it. Um, I've talked to, uh, talked to clerk at Fonda, and she said they, while they do have one, they put a whole bunch of restrictions on theirs. The problem becomes that you can't shut off the comments. No matter what you do, you're, you're a public entity, so you cannot shut off comments, and if you, I hate to say it, but if you go out there and you talk to anybody who has a Facebook account, I'm sure they can pull up a litany of Facebook posts that basically lay out a lot of misinformation. Uh, one of the bigger misinformation, um, deals we had here was when we had the meeting for the, um...
Drainage district.
Drainage district, and, um, seems that, um, according to some people, that the word was put out ahead of time to stack the deck, so to speak, and bringing a lot of people just to show their distaste or any, any bit of authority. I don't do Facebook myself, so I can't verify that, but when you have multiple people telling the same story, you have to believe there's, there's some truth to that.
Just a minute. Matt, can you come over here and join us? I'd like the people on this network you got going to see your face when we're having these serious meetings. Come on over here and sit down. Come on, Matt.
May I ask him a question?
No.
No. No?
You're not on the council here last week?
No.
Let's just let her go here. Anyway, so I want to do some more research on this Facebook thing. I want to talk to our attorney, get his advice on it. I haven't been able to do that. And, uh, talk to a couple of experts who build these things and find out the good and the bad of any of these, these, uh, Facebook accounts. I'm not sure that the, the, the need to have a Facebook account to get the word out is so overwhelming that we need to, we need to give, um, some people out there in the world their little platform to, uh, run people to ground and, and run people down and, uh, and put a bad light on the city, so I'm going to ask the council to go ahead and let me continue to do some research on that. And before we bring it up for...
Check it out. But you, you've got a nail on the head. You can't shut off the negatives.
Yeah.
And there's a lot of people that's through golden life, so I hate to say I'm not in favor of it.
Anybody else?
Uh, do we need to wait?
Well, I want to do some more research on it. I want to be fair.
I think we'll just, we all like to be fair.
Yeah.
I want to be able to just notice what this, these phones can do.
Yeah, that way we don't, when the people, um, have their, their talk after the meeting and whatever other forms of information to get sent out, and we say, no, we're doing our own most to be fair. All right, uh, new business. Uh, first up is a resignation of a councilperson, Connie Dewey. So we need to have a motion to accept that resignation.
I agree to accept it.
Second, and, and, oh, that, that way it's formal.
Do you want a second?
Yeah, if you want to call for a motion, it doesn't matter.
All in favor? All right. Okay, the next part of that is we need to look at, uh, the replacement of, uh, Connie on the, the council. You know, you started advertising that there would be an opening.
Not yet, because I got to do it four twenty.
Okay.
So...
So you've got it all prepared.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So, anyway, that'll be...
So it can't be less than four days before the next council meeting, and more than twenty days before the next council meeting. The advertisement has to be published in the paper.
Okay, so, uh, the council.
So it's logical that the next meeting...
Yes, we'll, yeah, and then we'll be in our sixty day timeframe.
And how long was her?
She was done at twenty-five.
So... That would be, what dates can begin? Our next meeting is July eighth, so you can start technically on the fourth.
As the last page of the...
It's the last page. And personally, there's forty days. So that would be... It'd be like starting on Friday. Yeah, all right.
If people want to stay, because our paper rolling is published on Wednesday.
Okay. All right, so nothing else to do on that one. Sheriff's report.
I just wanted to, uh, really do the report.
Uh, PAC PR Committee, Dustin Thompson to update the comments.
Yeah, hi, I'm Dustin Thompson. I'm on the PAC School Board. Thanks for having us tonight. Appreciate it that you guys gave us to put on the table. I have Sarah Boyson also. She's on the, uh, School Board as well. You want to read it?
I can.
We're just going to read this little statement and then we'll just kind of...
Yep. So the public, um, the Public Honeymoon Area Community Public Relations Committee formed this year, and we, um, our goal was to reach out to each community and to get to every city council meeting, um, just to kind of introduce ourselves and extend an offer to partner more freely. Um, we want to ask each city how they feel like we're communicating and working with each other and how we can improve. And then, that school is central to quality of life issues for each community, and we want to understand how to best achieve our combined goals. We want to understand how to maximize our work together for our kids, our school, our communities. Initial focus is on how we utilize tax or joint grant monies and things that you guys are interested in driving and that we're interested in driving to build student outcomes, economic development, overall quality of life, and local career opportunities in communities. Um, the goal is that you wouldn't be working on something and we would be working on something separately, but that we could work together to get better and more forward outcomes and work together in a more unified way.
No concept.
We just feel like sometimes we've gotten away from that. We want to make sure we reach out and we, uh, are open to partnering in opportunities that will help both, um, each, each community and the Honeymoon Area Community Districts.
Yeah, that kind of, kind of takes me back to a saying I heard some time ago, actually goes back from Bible, but it takes a village. It takes a village, so that means basically if everybody pulls together in the same direction to get a lot of stuff done, it's when you have the people who do not want to pull. Want to pull against you, then it's difficult to get things done.
We're only going to build a five-year strategic plan, and, um, we always have to hear ideas or places you're going to so that we can, um, make sure that we're working together, not working against anyone as we formulate that plan in the future.
There are vision alliance. Uh, we've got one of the biggest school districts in the state of Iowa. I live in Palmeroy, and I didn't, I forgot how far. It's like over a half an hour to get here. So, but, but we're in the same school district, so... Your culture in your town is different than mine in Palmero and Halflock, but we just want to make sure our, our vision is becoming one instead of, I'm not saying we're butting heads or anything like that, but, but just...
I think during COVID, um, and lockdown, a lot of communication was lost or relationships that had been built in the past.
True.
Kind of just felt sort of excited, and so we just wanted to renew those and make sure that you knew that, uh, that's something we were looking for, and if you had ideas or you had needs, that we were able to communicate and open that door open.
Yep.
We're only a phone caller or an email away, and it's no problem. Please reach out to us with anything we can talk about.
Okay. And, and vice versa, you know, um, sorry, I want to go a little bit. I want to paint Palmeroy black and red and white. I want to paint, uh, Roth black and white. I, I don't want to see any other colors in there. That, that's what I want, so... Yeah, thank you guys.
Yeah, thank you. All right. Next item, renew the Roth Dodeo liquor license. Any problems last year that I'm aware of? So we have a motion to renew that.
We have a motion to renew the liquor license of the Roth Dodeo.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Don't think there's any room for discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, next item up is, uh, road closure. We have a greater Roth days coming up, and down here at the school, they want to have a venue where they have antique tractors parked there. Give our people an idea of where, what it was like in the old days, I guess you could say. Um, so they're, they want permission to just close the street for one day during the greater Roth days. I believe it's Saturday. And, uh, that way, nobody actually lives on Lincoln Street, and there's only one house on the area for Walmette Street. Actually, two houses there. I don't think it's going to, I think they more or less want to put it on Lincoln, not on Walmette, but it's just one of those things. They'll, they'll nail it down when, uh, as we go down the road, so I just need a motion to approve the, uh, closure of the road for one, one day during the greater Roth days.
Um, is the motion to close Walmette Street for one day during the greater Roth days?
Or Lincoln Street?
Lincoln Street, Walmette.
Whichever one they decide on. Do I have a second?
That's me. Second.
All in favor of that?
Aye.
Okay. Second part of that is we have down here runs parallel to the tracks from Elm Street to Broad Street. There's something called, on some maps called No Name Street. There actually is not a street there. There never was a platted street there. Part of the property in that is belongs to the railroad. It's a right-of-way, and over the years, the elevator had access to that, and they expanded, plus now they have the tire store there. If you look on Beacon Snyder, you'll see that while it says No Name Street, there's the railroad right-of-way and there's Keith Shalberg's property. There's no s, there's no real street there. Um, part of the problem too is people cutting through there, loosening up the rocks. Rocks go into the gutter, they flow down the gutter, they go into the storm drains, and we've got a mess. So what we're looking at is just closing that off any thoroughfare. We can't stop people from driving on the railroad right-of-way, but they also need to know it's, it's, uh, prohibited. You cannot, you cannot be on railroad right-of-way. There's no, uh, no trespass zone. And I'm sure Keith would appreciate not having mud and rocks and stuff like that in his yard, so...
Some people have been stuck on that area.
And the city, over the years, has tried to maintain it, but...
But, you know, the guys have never done that.
Well, they, they dump rock there occasionally, and they create it occasionally. That's, that's what I understand. That's, that's what I understand anyway. I would, I've not been here in over six years, so I don't know what happened to that. Anyway, so we, we'd just like to close that to, to, uh, through traffic.
I make a motion to close it.
Do I have a second?
Aye.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Take care of that. We do have a, a special animal permit from Jamie Wolf. Jamie wants to put a small chicken coop inside a hen's skin area on her property. Talking about five hens. What measure can be taken to ensure that the areas are used by the animal, kept clean, coop and run will be kept clean? Will be cleaned and maintained regularly. And what precautions will be taken to ensure the animals do not disturb the adjacent residents by making excessive noise? Chicken coop is spent skin, so they will not be able to get out. If they do cause a problem, we will get rid of the chickens, so... Sounds pretty fair. Yep. Do I have a motion to accept this animal permit?
Make a motion to accept Jamie's five contained chickens.
Pigs and chickens.
So listen, who is cleaning up the chickens yet?
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Resolution to sell real property and setting a public hearing and bidding. This is for the five parcels over here, gravel, uh, the, um, the bank, uh, has expressed interest in purchasing all those parcels, and so they want to turn it into a green space over there, which I think is great, so... Anyway. Have that resolution, so I need to have a motion to to propose a, to, uh, to make a motion for the resolution to, uh, sell that real property.
I make a motion in the resolution to sell that property.
Do I have a second on that?
I have a second.
Okay, is there any discussion needed? None? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Now I'll take a roll call vote. And Dan.
Aye.
Rob.
Aye.
Al.
Aye.
And Lana.
Aye.
Ordinance two forty-one, and that is for the water, sewer, and gas utilities, second reading. And that is to add the additional fee monthly for the meters that are still hooked up to the house. So...
Do the fish have to read it yet? Are they waiting for us to read it?
Yeah, I have, I have a second reading.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh... Being enacted by the City Council of the City of Roth, Iowa. Uh, section modified, section ninety-two oh two of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Roth is amended by adding the following unnumbered paragraph to whip: Each water service customer, this deal is water. This, you, each water service customer shall pay a monthly maintenance charge of ten dollars for any unused connections, including vacant properties with the exemption for deployed military personnel who will not be using the water. This ten-dollar monthly maintenance charge in addition to the monthly rates for the municipal water system. Now, in section ninety-nine oh one is for the sewer, basically the same thing. I don't think we need to do that. Same thing, it just, uh, deals with sanitary sewer system. And section three, uh, or ordinance one ten oh two, the same language, same amount for the gas service customers. There's a sever, severability clause. If any section provision or part of this ordinance shall be adjudged invalid or unconstitutional, such adjudication shall not affect the validity of the ordinance as a whole or any section, provision, or part thereof not adjudged invalid or unconstitutional. When effective, this, uh, ordinance shall be in effect from and after its final passage, approval, and publication as provided by law. Motion to approve. The first reading was by Lana, seconded by Dan. All ayes, no nays, absent was Connie. Motion was carried. So the second reading, I need a motion.
I make a motion.
Lana, make some motions. Do I have a second? Okay, Rob seconded it. Roll call vote. Lana?
Yes.
Al?
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
All right. Four ayes, no nays. Yeah, okay, that's it on that.
But can we?
We can speed it up. It's recommended that we don't.
Okay.
In case, uh, somebody is interested, so...
That's fine.
Just let it go until next month.
Okay.
All right. Ordinance two forty-two is, uh, amends, um... It adds a new chapter, basically, um, which is covers abandoned and vacant buildings. And, uh... It's lengthy, so I'm not sure we need to read everything here. Essentially, the, uh, it defines what a vacant, uh, or an abandoned property is. Defines, uh, the, uh, buildings as a public nuisance. Uh, it also adopts the need for vacant building registration. There is a, a, um, section, a subsection in here that deals with exemptions, inspections, emergency repairs, appeal hearing, in case somebody wants to, um, argue the point. Uh, penalties, savings clause, and alternative procedures. Like I said, this thing is lengthy, so... Need one here, the end here, okay. Uh, last meeting, we had a motion to approve by Dan, seconded by Rob, all ayes with absent with Connie, so I need a motion for the second reading.
I move to vote.
I move so. Okay, Dan? Make some motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Rob seconded it. Roll call vote. Lana?
Yes.
Al?
Nope.
Rob?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Four ayes, no nays. Alright. Next item up is Iowa DNR draft. We received a draft um administrative, administrative consent order. This is in regard to the January um timeframe where we burned the brush pile and didn't have the the uh all the approvals by all of the residents of the twelve hundred feet or quarter miles. They kind of go back and forth between the limits on that. Apparently, um, they had sent something to the city back in twenty fifteen when the initial burn happened and they asked for a plan. They didn't get one or at least it wasn't forwarded to them. And so they decided to take this to their council. Their council was reviewed it. I had talked to our attorney on that. Uh, there's no argument that we we did uh break the rules. They are asking for a penalty of seven thousand dollars. They have broken down the the penalty. Let's see here, uh, they have decreed that or actually orders that uh we will sell she's sorry, we shall cease burning of trees and tree trimmings at the site unless this burning site is moved to an area at least a quarter mile from any inhabited building or a written waiver in the form of an affidavit submitted to, submitted by the owner of each inhabited building uh located within one quarter mile of the site. Written waivers must be submitted to the City of Rawl and to the DNR office. Three further, the written waivers shall be come effective only upon recording in the office of the reporter of deeds of the county in which the inhabited building is located. Uh, the City of Rawl shall comply with the remainder of the requirements of the open burning exemption contained uh in Iowa code. Uh, within thirty days of the date of this administrative consent order is signed by the director, the City of Rawl shall provide a written plan, which we've already done that. They apparently misplaced it or whatever. We've since corrected them on that. Within sixty days of this date, the the order is signed by the director, the City of Rawl shall pay a penalty of seven thousand dollars. They've broken the penalty down, as I said, they could have fined us ten thousand dollars per day for air quality violations. Just want to let you know that city has different different re- requirements than the country, so they're more critical of us, I guess you could say. So uh they broke it down, um. Basically, three thousand dollars was assessed for economic benefit. Two thousand dollars was assessed for the gravity of the violation. And two thousand was assessed for, obviously, we were guilty of that, so we were culpable, so. Add it all together at seven thousand dollars. So I need a motion to go ahead and approve this consent order or reply to this consent order and pay our penalty.
My question is, maybe I'm going to go about this in the wrong order. So what's going to happen with all the other trees that need to be, so we're going to end up paying seventeen, eighteen, twenty thousand to keep chicken stock?
Well, it it's one of these things where we'll have to deal with it as it comes down the road. We do have the chipper. We can take care of the small stuff. We still do offer um the trees for people who want firewood, that can cut their own harvest, as long as they don't drag the logs down the street.
So how, I know it's a quarter of a mile or twelve hundred feet. There's no DNR area.
We don't have any, we don't own any property. I've talked to farmers who have the suitable locations and they're either no or won't give an answer. Um, so that's kind of out. I've talked to a number of residents, not, obviously not all the residents that are in twelve hundred feet or a quarter mile. Um, pretty much, um, knows, nobody, nobody's going to really want to approve that. And I, and I get that. So anyway, um. So anyway, that's, any other questions on that?
We don't make, you're just going to keep firing it on?
Yeah, so anyway, um, you know, I've I've worked closely with both the their attorney, I've talked to her, I've talked to our attorney, I've talked to the field agent, um, you know, they know that obviously, this is to get our attention and it did, so. You will, with your approval, we'll pay the, pay the fee and promise not to do it again.
Hey, I got a question. When this happened originally, you said you were going to take full responsibility, so doesn't that mean you should pay for it out of your pocket? Not out of the city's pocket?
Could you speak up? I can't hear you.
I said, when he first did it, he was going to pay, took full responsibility for it.
I talked to our attorney about that and he recommended that. I do not.
So you want the residents to pay for it? Do you take full responsibility for it? Okay.
Well, well, wait a minute now. Is this, was this before you you went down and photographed the fire or after?
After.
It was after you photographed it?
Yes.
And after you sent that to the DNR?
Yes.
Okay.
So you're costing the city seven thousand dollars.
No.
All the, all the other money that you cost this city because you want to bankrupt it. Thank you, I'm right here. Um, every ti- every every time you turn in, don't pay your taxes, so you know, what?
Obviously, I do because I owe, it's not my property.
We're getting off track here.
So that, so you're not taking responsibility then? Okay, thank you.
Well, I will say this. I've heard this old saying is that you should clean out your own doorstep before you blame others and and tell them to clean out their doorstep.
Well, you did clean theirs.
And I know that's a ritter to you. You know, that's, that's just.
Why is he able to speak?
That was my question. Why is he allowed to speak up?
Exactly.
It's done, it's, it's over with, so anyway, I need, I need a vote to go ahead and take this forward.
I make a motion, we pay the penalty.
Got a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. End of year dr- uh transfer resolution. Okay, we have a resolution here.
Yes.
Seven or two to transfer funds for the fiscal year end. Uh, whereas monies transferred to cover accounting expenses that were paid out of the general fund, uh, property tax relief, economic development, and closed completed capital project accounts. I'll get it out.
Hmm.
Good idea.
No, just quote, we don't need that, we don't have that.
Okay.
That's what I missed, so just ending with economic development.
Different than my copy?
No, I'm just scribbling mine out right now.
Alright, so, need a, I'll read this result and then we'll we'll get a motion to approve the following. Resolve the City of Rawl transfer the emergency monies in the amount of forty-four hundred dollars to the general fund. Resolve the City of Rawl transfer the local option sales tax monies in the amount of thirty thousand dollars to the general fund. Six thousand dollars to the economic development fund and forty thousand dollars to the debt service fund for the twenty nineteen street loan payment. Uh, so I need a motion to approve those resolutions. I make a motion to approve the resolutions. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion on that? Need a roll call vote. Lana?
Aye.
Al?
Yep.
Rob?
Aye, but I see Mary Anderson's name on it.
Yeah.
I'll cross it. That, I've already crossed it out when I make the the final original. Historical copy, you don't have the right name on it.
And at the end?
Aye.
Okay. And Rob, you said yes?
Yes.
Alright, so that's four ayes, no nays. Motion carried. Alright. Nuisance abat was, uh, our nuisance abatement. Contractor, Dave Christensen from Louisville, came, took pictures, uh, took a look at the town, developed letters. Those letters were sent out to people. We've already got some feedback on that from different people. It's, they, they, they believe it's just a waste of time, but uh I don't think it's a waste of time, so. Anyway, those people that have received those letters, they were, they were basically general in nature. Included pictures to show them what the violations are. Um, so when Dave comes back next time, um, we'll be able to further discuss. And then, of course, he'll take some more pictures in town. The people that didn't want to take any action or feel they don't need to take any action, uh, they will get another letter. This one will be a little more severe. And if they don't want to do it at all, then they'll end up going to court and uh, you know, it's their own doing. The only thing that we're trying to do is kind of clean up the town, make it a little more presentable. Um, we do have those people in town who feel as the, a big joke, they want to do whatever they can to uh to uh wreck the town. And they can feel free to do that. It's, it's America. It's a wonderful place and uh when they get their finger slammed in the door, then they'll realize that, well, maybe, just maybe that wasn't the smartest move. So we'll just play this out as it goes along. That was a big door. We'll just have to wait to see what the, the court decides. I'll, I'll make this uh clear. We don't intend to take anything in the court that we can't win. And I feel that we will, with the, the uh recent uh success of our attorney, um, I think uh we're gonna, people don't want to change. Sorry, we're gonna end up losing. Um, it's just it's just stupid to push back. It really is. Okay, with that said. Oh, one, one thing I did forget, I'll, I'll go back to my comments earlier. Um. We approved a general obligation bond.
No, we haven't, we haven't heard of it yet.
We approved the process to go to general, uh, general obligation bond. In that process, our bond attorney has said that he would look into the possibility of including the removal of damaged or diseased trees due to emerald ashworm. So we'll wait for his final word to see if we can include that in there and that may take some of the, some of the load up of uh the requirement to clean up all these dying trees. So we'll have to wait and see what, what further, further uh
But again, it will be about the city. If you have trees on your property.
On your property, they're your responsibility. These are just public trees.
Where's, what are we supposed to dump those?
Like I talked to you about those four, my, we, we take those out to the tree dump or no? Because they got that horn. There is no quarantine at this time for emerald ashworm trees that have been taken down. They recommend you do not transport them.
Outstayed.
Outstayed or even, you know, long distances to a couple counties. But there's no problem with putting them in our tree dump. And there's no problem with, at this point, with people cutting them up for firewood.
Just don't get them out of state.
Well, when you say haul them up, they're, I'm not going to chase them down the road to bear out where they're taking them. You know, if you ask them upfront and they, and they appear to be honest, you have to take their word for it. So with that, uh, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I agree to adjourn.
Second?